Better ask him for ever.
Not Buddy King?
I can't figure it out.
It was Buddy, was it?
Yeah, Buddy. Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's a big part.
It's six o'clock and I will call the December meeting of the Sartell St. Stephen School Board to order. Thank you to all the community members that are attending in person as well as online. We appreciate your interest and engagement in our school district. The expectation of our community is that all participants and attendees will conduct themselves professionally and with respect for other members of the community. And with that, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion with an amendment, please. I would move to adopt this agenda but add to the discussion section. So discussion number five. Further discussion on what we talked about last month about the primary elections.
Okay. Second. Motion by Matt, second by Jason. Any other discussion or questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I'll look for a move it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes unanimously. We will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the Truth in Taxation Public Hearing, and that will be led by Joe Prom. Thank you, Joe.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Like Patrick said, this is the Truth in Taxation portion of the meeting. If you've got questions at the end, I'd be free to entertain those. Just to remind you where we're at in the process, this is the presentation slash hearing part of this. This is the second to last thing in the levy process. The last piece is actually approving the final levy to certify, and that comes as an action item later in the board meeting. And how we got here was basically during the legislative session, they might pass laws that impact our local property taxes and how those are calculated. This year, there was really no action related to that because they didn't come to an agreement in the legislative session. So there weren't really a lot of things tax law-wise that changed for us, for school districts this year. Some of the formulas changed, and I'll go through what some things look like as far as property value goes. But as far as that step in the process, nothing really changed. In August, we go through, Department of Ed calculates our preliminary levy and shows us the first run September 8th. And then shortly after that, at the September board meeting, we approved the preliminary preliminary tax levy for our calendar year 2023. From then until now, nothing in our levy can go over that amount unless there's a voter approval. And this year, we had nothing on the ballot for approving anything that would impact our tax levy. So this is the same total that was approved back in September. I'll go through some of the changes from last year and kind of some reminders related to our budget as well. So Truth in Taxation Law basically says there's a couple of requirements. Counties have to send out a proposed property tax statement to everybody in November, and those are based on the preliminary tax levies sent by all the jurisdictions. If there were in a vote or election, those things would not, the effect of that would not show up on that statement. Most taxing jurisdictions are required a whole hearing like this prior to certifying the final levy. So this does come as our annual hearing. Some of the smaller ones, like watershed districts and whatnot, don't have to have a hearing. Our preliminary budget was set back in June. Schools are a little bit different than townships, counties, cities. We don't set our levy, our budget, based on this levy. Our budget for next year is set already. I should say our levy isn't necessarily based on our budget, it kind of goes back and forth. Our levy for, or our budget for 2023 was set last June. We have audited fund balances that were presented by Burton KDB last month. Those are, call them a far left. Got projected revenues and expenditures for each of our funds, and then a projected change in fund balance leading to what we anticipate as our projected ending fund balance. In the general fund, that total is about $44,000 positive for this year. That does include some spend downs in some of our reserves and our, and our assigned fund balances. So a little bit of a spend down in our operating capital and in our reserve for MA billing dollars. So as far as our unassigned fund balance is concerned, it's an increase of about $400,000. We ended last year at an unassigned fund balance of 16%, and we're planning to end this current year at an unassigned fund balance of 17%. The other, we set budgets for all these funds. Most of our activities, as you can see by the amounts of revenue expenditures, go through our general fund. Food service fund also accounts for obviously our, our school lunch and breakfast programs. Our community service fund is really where our early childhood programs are housed and youth recreation programs and enrichment programs, things of that nature. And in those funds, we always want to try to break even and not be subsidized by the general fund. We have very healthy fund balances in both of those, just $1 million for each of them. The building construction fund is a continued, we're close to spending that all down. There's an action item on the board agenda later to call for some bids for some lights. That will spend down the majority of that money this year. And then the debt service fund is just our required expenditures to meet our principal and interest payments on the bonds that we have outstanding. Most of the revenues in that are coming from this property tax levy, from the property tax levy that was approved last year at this time, as well as some state aids that offset those. Like I mentioned earlier, our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance is kind of how we measure our financial health in the general fund. Board policy says we have to be 10% or below, or look to make adjustments. Or above, I should say, sorry. As you can see, we were dipping down to about 10%. An operating referendum was approved in the fall of 2019. That revenue was first recognized in 2021. So we are in the third year of that operating referendum being a revenue source for us. And then as we put together the budget for '23, '24, this upcoming spring, that operating referendum would be in its fourth year of general fund revenue. It's typical for our fund balance to grow. On the upside of the first five years of a levy, it's a 10-year referendum that was approved. It's typical for that to grow, at least for the front half of that, and to start to come down after that, especially if our enrollment isn't growing by enough or if the state aid isn't keeping up with inflation. So it's typical to grow that up in the first few years of an operating referendum and maybe spend some of that down to what your policy is towards the end of those, that cycle. In our general fund, it's about a $40 million budget overall. And this is kind of how it breaks down on a program level. Our, actually, sorry, about $50 million now. Our regular instruction, vocational instruction, and special ed, those are all directly related to the classroom. So it's teachers, it's paraprofessionals, and any direct supplies related to those programs. So about 70% of our expenditures are related to the instructional programs. Our next biggest ones are instructional support and maintenance. So maintenance includes really all of the, any improvements we make, repairs and maintenance to our building, as well as the utilities in our buildings. And then the instructional support, the biggest thing there is really technology and staff development, so professional development, and then support of our, our technology programs, so be it staff or supplies, tech hardware, those types of things within those programs. You can see transportation then makes up about 4%. And pupil support is more like figure counselors, social workers, those types of things make up 2.5%. Our admin makes up 4% of our budget. That includes district-level administration, like myself, superintendent, human resources, the board, also building-level administration principles at each building. This is how that breaks down, so take all those expenditures and break them down by, you know, what are we spending in total, kind of broader categories. And you can see that about 80% of our expenditures are in our people. Salaries and benefits make up most of those. Other services, which is kind of vague, includes like our water and our electric bill, our heat bill and things like that, as well as sub-teachers. Those are all coded, those areas make up about 11% of our expenditures. And then capital and supplies make up the other, about 7%. On the revenue side, we rely quite a bit on state aids. About 83% of our revenue comes in the form of state aid, about 10% is local property taxes, and the rest is about 6%. In that other category, we're looking at federal funds and also fees for services, interest earnings, things like that. We're talking about the levy tonight, so how is our local levy determined? Mentioned earlier, it was a slow legislative session, so the legislature sets the formulas that really determine how all these are calculated. The Department of Ed then takes that and applies all those calculations for, for each district. And then, like I mentioned earlier, the board adopts a post in September. The final one can't exceed this, so we're at like the last step in that process. The total levy we're looking to approve tonight is in the middle column there. It's $12,398,678.61. This is a 2.67% increase from last year. Last year, we increased from the pay 21 levy by 3.14%. So over two years, about 3% per year. In the general fund, our increases of about $328,000 overall. Like I mentioned earlier, the operating referendum is in year four. The referendum and related levies increased by about $397,000. Our revenues don't go up by that much, they go up by only about $100,000 of that. But like I mentioned, the legislature didn't make much for changes. So as our referendum market value of our district goes up, as our tax capacity of our district goes up, anything that has a levy and aid split, as your values go up, more, more of that gets picked up on the local levy and the state aid portion of it decreases. So even though these are basically revenue neutral for us, or very close to revenue neutral from one year to the next, the tax portion did increase for, for Sartell St. Stephen. Operating capital, long-term facilities maintenance decreased by about $70,000 altogether. Really, the reason for this is basically the longer facilities maintenance program had positive adjustments the previous year. So they recalculate these every year, they kind of use estimated data looking forward every year when they come up with the calculations, and then they true them up for the next three years after that. So last year, when they approved the levy, we had positive adjustments in LTFM of about $60,000. And this year, there's about $8,000 in negative adjustments there. So as we go through that cycle of just truing that up, those two actually decreased in total by about $70,000. All the other levy components combined in the general fund, there's five other categories, increased by $705, so basically no change. In the community service fund, this doesn't make up a very large portion of our, of our levy, but it increased by $2,700, and it's basically just because of our net tax capacity increasing. This is a aid levy mix, and it's heavier on the levy this year. The revenue did not change in total. And then the debt service fund, overall, is a $8,500 decrease. We have to levy 105% of the total principal and interest of the, of the payments we have to make by statute. As those come in higher than anticipated, you know, the 5% is to basically allow for delinquent taxpayers, and assume that some of those are going to happen. As tax collections come in, and there aren't 5% payments of taxpayers that are delinquent, you, they start to reduce our levy to account for that. So this year, our overall change is negative $8,500 in debt service fund. So from an individual taxpayer's perspective, the county assessor is in charge of determining market value. We're going to look at market value properties in a little bit here, but county assessor determines a market value for each parcel. I'm told that 20% of properties each year, so every property, basically every five years, is looked at individually. So whether or not that's the property sold or there were improvements done, maybe a building permit pulled for it. But about, about 20% of the properties are individually examined by the assessor's office to see what that category should be. And then the other 80%, they apply formulas based on local sales and, and how much the, the studied property is increased by. So about, Sterns County tries to hit about 20% of them every year and look at them individually. Legislature, like I mentioned, sets the formulas for tax capacity. State auditor calculates the tax capacity for each individual parcel, divides out the tax burden, and then lets you know individually on your property tax statement how much that's going to be. Something I add this year, just because typically in Sartell St. Stephen, we've increased 6% to 7%. And anybody who's looked at buying or selling a house in the last couple of years know that there's been some inflation on those. And these are a year behind, basically, when the assessor's looking at these. So the proper, the real estate boom that kind of went through over a year ago, and some of the trends that went on around then, shows a significant increase in the market value and the net tax capacity of households in our district. So where we had seen a 6 and 6.5% increase in market value the previous two years, this year, we're looking at a 19% increase. And in net tax capacity, which is basically a multiplier of that tax, tax value by the relevant tax rate, be it industrial, commercial, residential, that amount went up by about 19.55%. So a lot of these are based on where there's an aid levy component to them, there's a stagnant number in legis, that legislature has to change in order for it to increase. There's no inflationary increase to those. So some of those equalizing factors. So as that number stays the same and our net tax capacity increases, they basically say, well, you guys can afford, your local property tax can afford to take on more of the tax burden for this, and we're going to pay less state aid in these categories. So it's one of the, one of the areas where they're looking at, you know, going into next legislative session, do some of those factors need to, those equalizing factors need to be changed? You know, that's part of the state's budget surplus, is a lot of these areas where they thought they were going to be paying more for aid. Because of property taxes increasing so much, a lot of these are going on local property taxes versus being paid to the state. So something to watch for in the legislative session next time, that's kind of based on, on this data right here. Because we're not the only district, obviously, seeing this trend. And that kind of brings us to the, to the household tax impact. As I, as I asked for this data from our, from our advisors that provide some of this stuff statewide at school districts, the average home value two years ago was about $250,000. And if you're, if you had a $250,000 home then and it, for some reason, has basically stayed the same level, your tax burden has gone down in the last two years. But most property taxpayers don't, didn't see that trend. Most of them saw the lower section, which is about a 7% increase for the pay 22 and about a 19% increase for the pay 23. So that's kind of what our average home value in the district has done over the past couple of years. And if that was your property and you saw that increase, you're seeing an increase from $1,452 per year, two years ago, to $1,573 this year. So about $120 per year change, or about $10 per month change over that two years based on that property tax, property value increase. We've got questions related to our levy. You can certainly contact me. My contact information is up there and available on the district website. And then in regards to property values, that's really beyond our control. Those are the county assessor's office in both Sterns and Benton County that deal with those. Questions?
Any questions from the other here?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Joe. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is, while I'm looking around here. So normally, our meeting starts at 6:30. And the way that this meeting is set up is to start at 6:00 and then just continue on, depending on how long Truth in Taxation starts. One of the folks that signed up to be a speaker this evening, I don't see here yet. So I am wondering if we should continue on for a few minutes? Or if we should come back to this section? While we start with the speaker, let's press him. Okay. All right, I will change the order of the speakers and we'll just move into the next section of the meeting. So the next section of the meeting is recognition of visitors in public forum. I will quickly read the description for this section. This is an opportunity for members of the school district to address the board. During this portion of the meeting, the board and administration will listen to comments. However, the board will not respond to questions. Since this is a meeting of the board to conduct the business of the school district, this portion of the meeting will be limited to a total of not more than 30 minutes and 10 individual speakers. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to not more than three minutes. And I will also state that in the interest of maintaining a respectful and welcoming public forum, all speakers are expected to demonstrate professionalism and deliver their remarks in a respectful manner. Bulgarity, personal attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. And with all of that being said, I will invite our first speaker of the evening up. I'd like to invite Bennett to speak. And Jeremy will run a timer that you should be able to see from there.
Fantastic. Good evening, school board, Dr. Aaron Hoover. I hope you're all doing well. I've spoken up here a few times now, over these past two and a half years. And as we know, this is the final time of addressing this current makeup of the board as we move into the next session. And every time I've spoken, I have adamantly thanked you, and this time is no different. What you have accomplished over these past two and a half years has been incredible. And what's also incredible is that you have done it in the midst of parents who believe they are more qualified than teachers, so-called grassroots organizations that are backed by corporate extremism, and groups who claim to place a priority on kids, and in reality, they're only using their own children as political pawns to push their agenda. In the midst of all this, you have answered with grace and compassion. You answered a call for equity and stepped up to that challenge. The first time I spoke before you, about two and a half years ago, I asked for mental health resources for all of our students. And I can say with confidence that you all have taken steps to accomplish this goal. Invaded counselors and created systems to create connections between our students and staff members. Not only that, we've taught diverse perspectives, added buses for our students in wheelchairs, made our sports and activities more accessible to all students, protected student privacy, and supported our teachers. And most importantly, I have no doubt that every single day, each and every single one of you did what you believed was best to make sure that all of our students who walked through our doors felt safe, loved, and supported. And I cannot thank you enough for that. During this process, we haven't always agreed, but that's okay. Of these times, though, we didn't see eye to eye. Myself and other students made that clear, and many of you responded immediately. And we sat down and had a conversation. A respectful, engaging, fact-based conversation that allowed us to see where we were coming from and find a common ground. To the members of the board who will no longer be joining us next month, I hope to see you, I hope to continue to see you at community and school events. To the remaining and new board members, I hope you continue to engage in respectful conversation with students and staff, as well as maintain your ability to listen and change as we all continue down this path ahead of us to make our schools more equitable and more loving for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bennett. Okay. I don't believe our second speaker is here this evening, so I will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jeremy, second by Tricia. Any discussion or comments?
Yeah, I'm going to take my turn to say thanks to everybody who donated. The list in here is incredible, so really appreciate that.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the reports section. And our first report this evening is the Saber Star Report. I believe Principal Safran will present that.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Thank you, welcome.
You want me to?
Sure.
So I'm Angela Safran, I am the principal at the middle school, and it is an absolute delight and honor to be here this evening with you to introduce a very, very special middle school saver, Mr. Baha Kadim. He is our staff star nominated and then chosen by our Boulder Building Operational Leadership Team to represent our school as our, as our shining star. I really couldn't have chosen anyone any, any better. Baha is one of the very first people that I met when I started here at Sartell. And the very, very first thing he said to me was, "How can I help you?" And that has continued every day. He is the most positive, genuine, kind, just amazing professional that you could have in your building, and I hope to keep him in my building for a very, very long time. The nomination was written as such, and so I will, I'll read it and then have him come and join me. But Baha is such a happy personality. He's always smiling and greeting people and SMS with joy. He's always happy to help with whatever needs and whatever we need in our classrooms. He is a star. Baha is the best. He takes care of our buildings, he takes the time to get to know everyone in our buildings, he goes above and beyond to make sure that everyone in our building has only the very best because he is the very best. Congratulations, Baha.
Thank you so much, it's an honor.
On behalf of the board, thank you so much for your great service to the district.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Excellent. All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is the School Board Student Representative Report. And for that, we have Ben Thompson to report. Thank you, Ben.
Hello, everybody. So first, the first goal is ORELEC, and they've been learning about the gift of community service. Each classroom has been striving to collect food donations for the Salvation Army. And the outpouring of support for this service project has been tremendous. They have filled their blue barrels, which is like where they're collecting it, full of food donations. The preschool students have extended their warning about food in the community by taking their field trip to Coburn's, which is a thing that all preschool classes do. They got to go behind the scenes and learn how virtue stores run and where our food comes from. December has also been great for the kindergarten students, who, they had a gingerbread door decorating contest to go along with their gingerbread cookie unit. And all classrooms participated in gingerbread learning center rotations before winter break. They also hosted a school-wide winter bingo as a celebration to reward students for being safe, respectful, and engaged, which were the attributes they were working on recently. which were the attributes they were working on recently. The next school is Pine Meadow, where the physical education department held their annual week-long obstacle course in FIAD, where they turned the gym into the Winter Wonderland, where they had like an obstacle course and lots of winter decorations, which all the students loved a ton. They were super excited to be able to participate in the obstacle course. They've also been connecting with the community. The art department received $1,000 from Granite City Tire and Auto on a Winter Wonderland art project. The Granite City chose one first grader's art piece to be highlighted in their winter flyer, and then they donated the money to the art department and $100 to the classroom the student was a part of. The Great River Federal Credit Union reached out to Pine Meadow, asking how they can support teachers and students. They donated games, materials, snacks, and to support the learning and teaching in the classroom of students. And lastly, Pine Meadow wanted to recognize second grade teacher Lori Ross, who received the Teacher of the Month Award from Light FM. She was nominated by a student from last year's class, and this was written regarding her. "Miss Ross has always been a great second grade teacher, always positive and upbeat. She makes learning fun, and it has been a hard year, and she made sure to always look for the good and keep things interesting, checking in and providing extra support anytime it was needed. She inspired Kendra," who was the student, "to think about being a teacher someday. We appreciate all she does and think she should be recognized." So congratulations to her. And Riverview had a... Their Saber Star this month was... Or last month was Mr. Joey Olson, who is a special ed teacher. And he... They said the award was well-deserved for everything he does every day to help the students. At the beginning of the month, they had Professional Development Day, where teachers were able to learn from one another. This was just for teachers, obviously. Staff learned about... These were just like topics they did. Words their way, multiplication in small groups, various apps, step up to writing, phonemic awareness, and vocabulary comprehension in small groups as things to teach students. And Riverview students filled up a Saber Shield outside the media center with everything they were grateful for. This is back to Thanksgiving. Where it was great to see almost 950 turkeys with messages of what the students were grateful for. And last, they did their annual school-wide Turkey Bingo the day before break, which all the students enjoyed, the bad turkey puns and prizes. And second to last is the middle school, where they've been having their orchestra, choir, and band. Students are giving performances in their PAC. The middle school wanted to thank everyone who attended and supported the school's music programs. Congratulations to Baha Kadim, again, the Saber Star. And congratulations to Paul Dieterman, who was nominated by a student and was recognized as Teacher of the Month on Mix 94.9. Different one, but same thing basically. Winter sports and activities are underway for both the middle school and the high school. And they want to thank you for supporting their students, athletes, and coaches. And at the high school, which is the best, obviously, student council is holding their annual blood drive on Wednesday, and students 16 or older can volunteer to give blood. And we expect an excellent turnout of approximately 80 students. And this blood is going to the Red Cross, I believe. The Minnesota Honor Society is getting ready for their annual talent show, as students auditioned, I believe, last week. It might be this week because of the snow days. And we are all very excited to see the talents in SA in the coming months. In our fourth block classes, we're doing a money drive, and proceeds are going to families in the area in need this holiday season. Our band and orchestra have had concerts the last two weeks, and choir is happening probably right now or in a couple minutes. And everyone enjoy having two and a half snow days, and we're all very excited for winter break. We did do winter bingo, which... Because we didn't get to do Turkey Bingo. We did do that this week, and everyone is very excited for that. And lastly, on behalf of the students of Sartell, we want to thank Mr. Marushen, Mr. Snowburger, and Ms. Byrd for their service and dedication. We greatly appreciate all of your work.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Any questions for Ben?
All right.
Thank you so much for your report. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent report.
It's never fun to follow him. All right. Let's like to say that, you know, 2022 has been an amazing year here in Sartell-St. Stephen's Schools. And as we approach the turning of the calendar, I want to share a few highlights for you tonight. Recent highlights, anyway. We are, as Ben mentioned, nearing the conclusion of our annual Music in December concert series, which includes the choir concert here this evening in the pack. The concert series will then conclude tomorrow evening at Riverview, where our young musicians in band, choir, and orchestra will be performing. Speaking of Riverview, this month, the students shared their artwork related to displays of gratitude. It was evident from their work that we all have much to be thankful for. Also had four high school students, orchestra students, recently participated in Concordia Honor String Festival. That's quite an accomplishment. Also want to share that the ever-popular Middle School Holiday Cafe was last Friday, the 16th. Our amazing and talented special ed students, once again, did a wonderful job putting the event together. We did have our Youth Frontiers Courage Repeat in late November. The feedback from our seventh graders and staff was all incredibly positive. We've also had the opportunity this year to really spend time focusing on instruction. So most recently, our instructional coaches engaged in district-wide professional development. And in addition, several of our administrators have continued their professional with colleagues from both Osseo and Wayzetta school districts. Other learning has included classroom observations and with teacher colleagues in the metro area and administrators. So over the last several months, they've been spending time in those classrooms. And in March, we're happy to invite those administrators from Wayzetta back to Sartell to visit some of our classrooms. A little over a week ago, I also had the honor and privilege of providing our school site tours to our school board-elect members. It was a wonderful morning. We discussed some pertinent and current work in the areas of operations and instruction, and it was a very productive day. I want to thank Emily, who's here tonight, Jen, and Scott for spending time with me and getting to know our school sites. Since our last meeting, I have attended the C Board meeting, NADW partner for Student Success Board meeting, and the December meeting of the Sartell Chamber. Also happy to announce that we recently filled our new Welcome Center Student Data Specialist position at the DSC. So we're thrilled to have this one-stop shop for families as they enroll their children. First of all, also be handling all the day-to-day student data records and recordings, things of that nature, and working closely with Joe. As you know, and as Ben alluded to, the storm last week was an odd one, as it kind of circled our state. So my colleagues from both Saint Cloud and Sauk Rapids Rice tonight became pseudo-meteorologists for a few days. So between the timing of the snow accumulation and the treacherous driving that resulted, we made the difficult decision to cancel school on both Wednesday and Thursday last week. So we take it seriously when we cancel school, and so it's a challenging decision that we don't take lightly. In terms of that, no decision has yet been made. It's likely we're gonna make up one or both of those days in January and/or February, and a decision for families will likely be made prior to winter break, so sometime this week. And last, but certainly not least, Board Vice Chair Matt Morley and I would take a few moments to express our sincere gratitude to our outgoing board members. Chairman Marushen, Clerk Jeremy Schnelberger, Director Amanda Byrd. Serving elected office is never an easy task. It just isn't. But each of you has served with grace and conviction. And as I said, I am incredibly proud and eternally grateful for the opportunity to work with you and all members of this board. So Patrick, Jeremy, and Amanda, on behalf of the Sartell-St. Stephen's staff, I thank you for your service. I know I'll see you around, and I wish you well in your future endeavors. I'm gonna pass to Matt, and then Krista has a few things to hand out to you as well.
So yeah, on behalf of your fellow board members, I'd also like to say a very sincere thank you. Riverview has put in a lot of time and efforts over the years to the school district, and it shows. We've gotten great results. We're on a great track. And from a personal perspective, over the last two years, my first two on the board, I'm very thankful for your dedication, for your leadership, and the example you have set for the rest of us. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's very nice. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I've loved every minute of this. Well, most minutes.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Ryan Hoover? Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the District Finance Report. Presented by Jill Cum.
I'll keep this one very brief, since you already heard for eight or 20 minutes tonight. The year-to-date budget actual report through November is posted in the agenda. We are tracking just as expected as it would be for this time of year. No major updates there. We will be... Started the process of working on where our final enrollment looks like compared to what was budgeted and preliminary enrollment projections for next year. Those will happen kind of over the next couple of months. And hand-in-hand with those will go our staffing. So, in the coming months, look forward to some more information on those items. Do have a couple action items further down in the agenda for you. Talked about the Truth and Taxation and the approval of the tax levy already. Many of you over the years, including especially some of the board members that are leaving, have worked a lot on the building project over the years. And this is the last major piece of the building project bonds that we have. That's Item D dot 3, approving a call for bids for outdoor lighting. So that would provide stadium lighting on the two high-performance fields, right, currently used for soccer mostly at the high school here, and also the varsity, the main baseball and softball field at the complex. So, providing flexible usage for a lot of different activities there and setting us up for future at this facility. So, that will pretty much expend most of our bond dollars. We've got a couple other things lingering with the outdoor concession stand being filled up or being completed this winter. But this is kind of the last major domino to fall. For that, the other item I've got in action items is the arena lease agreement for the Sartell Youth Rec Center. Mostly used by our hockey programs, but also used by many of our other activities now that the second sheet of ice is converted to a turf field for several months of the year. So this puts us as basically the premier tenant for that. This lease agreement does not change anything we are doing in principle. It basically just documents it and gives some protections to both the district and to the youth hockey association or the... What's the correct association?
Youth Recreation Center.
So, to basically clarify some things, what both parties are responsible for and whatnot. So both parties' attorneys have reviewed that, suggested some changes. And this will help with our audit to have everything properly documented as well as far as the lease agreement is concerned. So, feel free to bring up any questions you have for that during the approval piece of that as well. But that's just another item on the agenda that... Any questions?
Thank you very much, Joe. Okay, next item on the agenda is School Board Committee Report. So, if anyone has any committees to report on, please go ahead.
Guess I'd report on Policy Committee. We met just a few days ago, and that was our... Mostly our review of policies that are required to be reviewed annually. So, some of the other ones... Some of them included in the annual review were revised as recently as just a few months ago, because they kind of spilled over from last year. So, you'll see at the end of our packet, there are some policies that were part of a previous meeting that are for their final review here. Then there's several policies that we did either review or revision to at this last meeting. So, if anybody has any questions about the changes, let us know.
Any other recent committees that met? Okay. In that case, then it appears that the sixth item...
I got real excited to move it up into the other one.
Has been completed already, which was School Board Member Recognition of Service Report. So we will move beyond that into action items. So, first action item on the agenda is the Personnel Omnibus Resolution, and I look for a motion to approve that.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion by Jeremy, second by Matt. Any questions or discussion on Personnel Omnibus Resolution? Okay, hearing none. We'll move it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is I will look for a motion to approve Policies 104, 206, 505, 512, 521, 523, 526, 704, and 722.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Tricia. Any questions or discussion on these policies? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Call for Bids for Outdoor Lighting. I'll look for a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Jeremy, second by Jason.
I have one question.
Certainly.
Are we thinking this would be ready for fall?
Big question for Joe.
For next fall?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this one is for the actual, to basically, for the supplies that'll be used. There are only a couple major type manufacturers for these that do most of them in the Midwest. So, once they... Once we know that for sure, they kind of have to do the final design around that. So once that's known, we'll probably have another bid for the installation and electrical related to this.
And just to put it out there, this is in conjunction with the overall stadium plan. So this fits inside of the current stadium plan that is still on the table.
We would look to award a bid in January with the opening meeting, the January meeting, I believe, probably January 23rd, depending on organization.
Okay. Great. Any other questions about the outdoor lighting? All right, hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is I will look for a motion to approve the Arena Lease Agreement.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion by Matt, second by Jason. Any questions or discussion on this?
Just one question. Do we have any statistics on how much we're using the turf portion of that?
I don't know that it's formally tracked. I do know that they... You know, it's based... I know that they're very flexible in allowing us to get in there. They kind of set aside after the school day, the first two hours after that, as our availability for that. And I know as weather changes things, sometimes, or in the summer, I know they've been very flexible with our coaches for when they want to get in there. But I don't have any usage data on that.
Only thing I would know about is I think lacrosse used it quite a bit. But I'm not sure about some of our other activities.
Can you explain just the general usage agreement here? Because I'm looking at, you know, they have different provisions for hockey games. It looks to me like this is really a mid-August through end of May type agreement, that there's... Like, we don't have priority over the summer months. Can you just give the general sum of that?
We still have ability to use the... Yes, during the summer as far as our basically tour today.
Okay. And then... But...
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to the discussion part of the agenda. We have officially reviewed several policies as part of policy committee, so in this case, these are policies that were being reviewed as part of our annual three-year cycle and do not have any substantive changes in content. It's policies 413, 506, 514, 522, and 606. So those are there for your review. They will be updated on our website. And then, we had several other policies that committee, policy committee decided were due for revisions. And so these are the first reading of the revisions for policies 203.2, 203.5, 410, 414, 415, 524, 525, 541, 601, 602, 603, 604, 605, and 616. So these will be on the agenda for readings over the course of two months and then up for, up for approval after that. Several of these are the annual policies, and there were statute changes, and so MSBA recommended some updates to these policies.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
To echo that, yeah, a lot of the changes, you see the red lines where it's, you know, an entire page being added, it's either a situation where statutory provisions have been added by MSBA, so they are almost word-for-word with the statute. You really can't get around adopting them. The other one is there was at least one policy where we had just mistakenly admitted a few paragraphs from an MSBA policy. So again, I think it was consistent with statute. So that's, that's why you're seeing some pages with, you know, one or two full red additions. But I also wanted to say there was one edit that wasn't exactly correct, and it's not substantive, but I think we should fix it now so we can consider this the first reading. That's 525, just in the opening sentence. We need to delete the words "has increased." And that was a change we had discussed during policy. I think it just didn't make it onto this copy.
Got it. Okay. I agree with that. I remember that part of the discussion, so we will just have that change made into policy 525. Any other discussion or questions on first reading of these policies? Okay. Next item under discussion is the future organizational meeting, which will take place on Monday, January 9th, 2023, in the District Service Center at 6:30. And that meeting will be used to organize the board for next year and plan all of the meeting dates, so, and several other things that are on that agenda. So then, the next item under discussion is future school board meeting, which was listed as Monday, January 23rd, 2023. And that would be the date of that meeting if that's what the board decides at their organizational meeting. That's just listed out as how we've done our meetings in past years. And if it stays the same, then that would be when the January meeting would be. But that would get finalized in the organizational meeting. Any discussion or comments on those upcoming meetings?
I'll just share for the both. The reason why that organizational meeting is the second is the New Year's Day observance, so it's a holiday. That's why it's a little later than it would normally be.
Right. Yes, normally, that's the first Monday of the year. And in this case, it's the ninth for us.
I'll just share one thing that I'm pretty excited about. I've been in touch with the city staff up in St. Stephen, and I've been told that quite a number of years ago, there was a tradition of holding at least one of our board meetings up in St. Stephen at their city hall, and it sounds like we'll be able to get back into that routine. So they've got one or two dates that are available to us, and we'll talk about that more at the organizational meeting.
Great. Great. And then, the last item on the agenda under discussion that we added at the beginning of this was discussion around the primary election, which was something that was discussed at the last meeting. And since then, we sent an email to MSBA to get a little bit of feedback and input from them regarding what other places do this and how that has worked. And then, we also checked in on costs that would be associated if the district chose to go that direction. So I just wanted to give everyone on the board an opportunity to either continue any discussion on this topic or ask questions, or just basically follow up on the discussion from last month.
Do you want to share the cost?
Yeah, so.
Estimated cost that Joe gave us.
Right, so we, so one of the things, well, first, I'll just share, all right, so Greg Abbott from MSBA responded and just noted that there are nine, nine school districts in the state that currently utilize the state's primary election system. He indicated that nobody had changed to add a primary over the last 10 years, he said, and a couple moved out of the primary. He said that the main downsides of running a primary, or I guess the drawbacks potentially of doing it, are that it's an earlier filing date, and so MSBA perceives that as one of the potential drawbacks of using a primary system. And so he said some of those districts have had to run longer campaigns and more of a campaign to make sure that people knew about the earlier filing date in April and made sure that people got out and filed earlier. And also that there can be an additional cost. So in this case, the way that this resolution works, if our district ever chose to adopt it, would be that if you have more than two times the number, more than two times the number of people that register for the openings, so in our case, if we had three openings and more than six people register for that election, then you would be required to run a primary. And the primary would reduce it from whatever number it is down to six. And so there is an additional cost associated with that because you have the additional election. And so what we found out for our district is that we run our elections in a general election year, and so our election costs are about $2,500 to $3,000. And about three-fourths of that is publishing, and the rest of that is charges from Stearns County for cost of ballots, election judges, et cetera. So if we were, if we chose to do this and had a primary, that would increase our election costs basically by two and add another $2,500 or $3,000. The only other situation is that if we had a special election, if there was a situation where we had to elect one member for the board under a special election, and that wasn't part of a normal general election cycle, then that could be more costly because we'd have to pay more for election judges and things like that. And so the estimate was that that might end up being somewhere in the range of like $7,000 to $10,000 if we were in that situation.
And that would be triggered by anything more than two, right?
Right. So then, if you had one opening and you were running a special election and three people signed up or four people signed up, then you'd be subject to running a primary. So it's something that I think would have to be put in place by maybe April?
Yeah, I think it's April 15th when I looked at the statute. So that, I mean, there's no deadline we're up against here. That's why it's being added just as a discussion item here.
Right.
Yeah, I appreciate that info. I'm, it's been oddly quiet. I don't think I've had anybody reach out to me on this since we mentioned it last month. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything from others, if they want to share any opinions from outside this board, but.
I've had no one reach out either, on either side of it.
Yeah.
I think we have good data, and I think it's a good discussion that we can continue to have when the new board is in place.
Right.
See where that goes.
I think the MSBA, as I, just reading through that, it feels like their, their worries that people would not register because it's so early that they're just not thinking about it yet.
Right. The people would miss the filing date.
And reading between the lines, that's a long time to campaign. It is, yeah. That might discourage people to sign up so early and know they have two elections to go, right, as opposed to one.
One positive, having Saint Cloud have a primary, I mean, there'll be noise from that, right? So we're piggybacking on that, but they're one of the nine districts that do it, so.